All right, welcome everybody. If y'all can hear me, give me the high sign. Good, all right. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. My name's Scott Wilthong. I had the privilege of serving as the transition chair for the New Day Livingston, which is the effort that you've all come here tonight to get a report on. It's been a wonderful process and we're excited about the opportunity to tell you about everything that's been done and we're going to hear from our new parish president here in a few minutes. But first, I think it's appropriate that we have prayer and I'd like to call on Mr. Larry Davis to come and lead us in an opening prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this time just to gather, Father, for the mission, Father, to continue to protect our parish, Father, to continue to welcome righteousness back in this parish, God. We thank you for the past election, Father. We thank you for raising up leaders, Fathers. Daniel reminded us of that you raise leaders, Father, and you tear down leaders, God. And we say thank you for this new generation of leadership, Father, that you have called on, that you have ordained for such a time as this. Father, we pray for them on their mission. We pray that you give them steadfast courage, no matter the odds. Father, allow them to stand unwavering, unwavering in front of you, in front of the cross. God, we thank you for your son. We thank you for Jesus. It's in your heavenly name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
All right, y'all be seated. Who's the... Oh.
I'm just an amateur.
Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to all of you who caught that and me who failed. Just want to again say welcome to everyone. I want to recognize our co-chair first, Eileen McCarroll, the mayor of Albany. Say hello, let's give her a hand. Eileen was the first call we made on this and she was happy to serve and we got to meet with her out in Albany and it's been a real pleasure getting to know her. I'm just going to introduce our folks real quick around the room and then they're going to give you the report as they come along. But first, I want to say hello from Miss Maurice Durbin, who is headed up our animal control team. Bobette Markey, who is our permitting chair, Wade Holden Infrastructure, Jim Gilbert. I do want to say Jim and Brandon were a huge help on this process and keeping everything together, just the logistics, the details, the meetings. And so that's why we have Jim and Brandon up here. They were an integral part of everything we did. You may not hear from them tonight, but I want you to know how important they were to this process. We have Gary O'Neil, who was our drainage and public works chair. We had Chris Tomo, who was Public Relations and Economic Development. We have Mickey McMorris, who is Finance. Bruiser Bryson is here representing Homeland Security and Robert Dugas here as well, and then there's Brandon. So just wanted to recognize all these folks. These are the people who are sitting around the dais tonight, so if you want to know who those are. First of all, I'm not going to be up here taking the time tonight. You didn't just come here to look at me, but I want to recognize the man of the hour, who is our new parish president, Randy DeLaat. He's going to come and give you a little opening remark, some opening remarks and introduce our first speaker. And then at the end, we're going to hear more from Randy. So I don't want you to think that this is the only time you're going to get to hear from Randy. So I do just want to go ahead and call him up, Randy. Been a pleasure working with you and I know we're all so proud to have you as our new leader, so come talk to us.
That was a great welcome. Thank you, guys. I also wanted to do Scott. Scott Wilthong was my campaign manager. He's one of the reasons that you win by 71%. October the 14th was a great day for Livingston Parish. I hope I'm my honest person that believes that. But the people spoke loud and clear about wanting a new day. This victory on election night wasn't a victory for me, but it was a victory for you, the people. We started this transition of the new administration immediately after the election. Since this is the people's election, we decided early on that we wanted to make the citizens a big part of this transition. We formed seven different committees to help us make this transition, and I'm going to read them off. Those were the Finance Committee, the Planning and Permitting Committee, the Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness Committee, the Public Works Committee, Infrastructure Committee, Animal Control Committee. Almost 50 people joined this transition team and most of them are here tonight. Obviously, we included professional people, but we wanted to make sure that the people had a voice. So the everyday people, the common people, they're included in this committee and they by far made up the majority of each one of these committees. We here to serve you, the people, and we want to make that very clear. That's why we here. In addition, we held public hearings to give every citizen of our parish the opportunity to give their input on a variety of issues. Tonight would be our eighth public hearing. I'm constantly stopped on the street and told by citizens, everyday citizens, about how excited they are to see that we are taking their input and taking it seriously and trying to implement those ideas. That was unheard of according to those people. And I want to tell you that that's a very humble experience. If you never had that happen to you, you know, that's very humble. And again, I get to take the credit for all the work you're doing. That's a typical politician, isn't it? Get to take the credit for all that work. And look, I'm glad they willing to volunteer that time. I really am. I want to thank Mr. Ricks and his team for being professional and helpful. They were given, we were given adequate assess and they continue to serve the people by helping us to take over in January the 8th. So thank you for Mr. Ricks and his administration. Tonight, we're going to hear a report from each of the seven committees I just named. They're going to report on what they discovered about the current state of parish government and they will make suggestions on how to approve those things. I met with each and every one of them last week and I want to tell you, those ideas have a couple of things. They have common sense. They all durable and we wondered why we didn't think of that in the past. But we're going to take these ideas seriously. We're going to implement them and y'all going to be, y'all going to be well, happy with the result. I meant, I'm going to skip a little bit and go back because I'm going to say something to close with. As I mentioned before with the committee, all having busy lives, they have people playing, they have children, they have to tend to, they have many, many events to go to. They made the community proud of their service and that's what most of the people do that develop, that donate their time or do anything. It could be litter pickup. It could be coming to these meetings. I see people across these, that's my good friends, by the way. I see Abby, I see Brad, they come to every meeting. I see people on this side, come to every meeting. That's donating your time because you can sit home and complain. You don't have to participate in a positive way. These guys are doing that and we lucky enough to have them on our committee to bring Livingston Parish forward. I'm happy. I have to admit to this, y'all. Most of our issues in Livingston Parish really boil down to one thing. In my opinion, it boils down to a lack of planning. It really does. A lack of planning and involving the public that you affecting. I'm proud to announce today, we're going to unveil that 100-day plan and I really think y'all going to be excited just as way I am. We have written copies that we're going to hand out to the public and we have given those to the media already because there's 150,000 people that live in our parish. Not everyone can be here, obviously. Not everyone can reach the media, but we are going to try to get this information out as best as we can and this starts tonight. We presented our plan in three major categories. Engaging our communities and building public confidence while improving basic service. Second is improving internal leadership and support with parish governing authorities. The third is addressing the most pressing needs of our parish. And I want to drill down on them all three. A, we begin from day one to start working on a parish-wide drainage plan. That's what we said in the campaign. We want our actions to mean the same things as our words. So if you're going to say it, you better darn well do it. If you work in this administration, you better darn well do it. So we have started that from day one. My team and I, we will meet with DOTD immediately to establish priorities. Anyone that lives around Dennis Springs and Walker knows our problems. Mr. Burns has worked tirelessly in the last 12 years to try to get our delegation to understand the problem. We have economic problems. We have infrastructure problems. We have egress, trying to get in and off the interstate. All those are problems. DOTD is going to have a new director that's going to be announced in the next two days by our governor. And I really believe he's going to be a friend of Livingston Parish. I'm not at liberty to say that name right now. Well, we're going to be the first one to meet with him and I really believe that's going to make a difference for us. We will immediately begin advocating for policies of smart growth and development. I feel confident that all councilmen and some of them are here tonight who will be with us. I look forward for the progress that's going to be made in this room, starting on January 11th. We're going to move the planning commission meetings to this room just so they can be televised. They haven't been televised in the future. Sometimes when a subdivision comes about or any project that's planned in the zone and has to get involved in, there may be eight or nine meetings for that to happen. And the public just can't attend those meetings. And so we're going to make it easier to get that information out there. We believe, our team believes that this is transparency and this gives people a better opportunity to see what's going on and that's what we're trying to do here. Finally, we're going to conduct an audit of the parish finances, operations and performances, identifying areas of improvement and savings. I want to make it clear, we're not talking about any misuse of money or anything of those things. What we talking about is maybe we can get better investments. Maybe we can spend our money more wisely. Those are the things that we have to perform audits to see if we're being correctly in our thoughts or maybe we can be tweaked and get a little more services via our tax dollars. This ain't the governor's government's money. We all know that. We know it's your money and we're going to be good stewards of that money. Election's over. I shouldn't be making any more promises. I should be committing to what I already promised you, but I will make one more promise. I promise you, I'm going to take a leadership role to get the mega subdivisions back under control. Out of town mega development will be revisited and all applications, requests are going to be followed up on and determined if parish, state and federal laws were followed. And I want to expound on that a little bit more. If you don't believe in smart growth and you got some kind of other idea and you say, look, you're putting all these people out of work. I'm not going to tell you here in this room tonight about the 16,000 homes that's ready to be built. What I am going to tell you is the out-of-town mega subdivision is what puts your local people out of work. Talk to your local contractor. They don't get none of that work. They bring their out-of-state workers with them. They make it, they make it so hard for the local guys to compete. They can't buy property. They can't compete with these guys building 2,000 homes. They used to build in 20 homes in the subdivision to 100 homes. We are not doing our local builders justice when we say bringing these out-of-town mega subdivisions here. I'm going to, I had a speech today that I want to steal something off of it. When you take mega subdivisions and you bring them in, I'm not saying all places they don't work. What I'm saying is you can't put a square peg in a round hole. And if you try to put a 2,000-home mega subdivision, don't count the townhomes even, if you try to put that on 4-H Club Road, that's putting a square peg in a round hole. And that just ain't going to work, guys. It might work somewhere else in our parish. It's not going to work there. I feel like I have common sense. I feel I'm a fair-minded person, but I do know what you want. I do listen to you. And I'm going to fight for you every time to make sure you get what you want. We're going to improve the drainage in our parish and we're going to do it right away. You're going to be proud of the work crews we got out there working now. I don't know if you're proud currently, but I promise you, you're going to be proud of the work crews that are performing the drainage on our roadside ditches, ladles and waterways. I left the best for last and I hope this doesn't offend anybody, but we're going to have animal control. Contrary to what you may have witnessed on the video today, we are going to have animal control in Livingston Parish. The money's already in the budget. You heard me say that time and time again. We're going to do this without raising the taxes. In fact, let me start with the animal control committee and bring Ms. Maurice Durbin up here today now.
Thank you all again for coming tonight. I hope that you're as excited as I am about working with this new administration and about finally getting animal control to all of the people in Livingston Parish. And for that, we have to thank our new president-elect because he has made this one of his top priorities and he has given his total support to the animal control, animal shelter committee, and we really appreciate that. This committee, our committee, has worked very, very hard. We have traveled all over South Louisiana to different shelters to see what they had that we liked or we didn't like, that would work or doesn't work and that is economically feasible for Livingston Parish to do. We've taken all of these ideas and we've compiled them together and we believe that we have a good idea of what we want to present to Livingston Parish. We think that this is going to be a great shelter and great animal control. We took those ideas that we had and we took them to an architect and we went over those with that architect and asked him to draw up something, a very preliminary drawing, so that you could kind of see what we have in mind, but mainly so that you would understand that this isn't just another promise. We are actually going to make this work and we are doing this right now. We have made lots of progress. This part, you see what our kennels are going to look like and down here you'll see the office space. We've taken the best, all the shelters that we've visited. We know exactly what kind of kennels we want, what kind of sewer we need, what kind of walls and ceilings, flooring. We know all of those things are ready that we want to put in place. Over here on this side, you will see what the shelter is going to look like from a visual, from an overhead visual. This little line going, that gives us access to the existing shelter. We will not demolish that shelter. We are going to use it because it has a lot of good equipment. It has good kennels. Not as good as the ones we're going to have because it's 20 years late and we know how to build better now. We know how to add things better. This will give us access to this that will help great. And if you're wondering where we're going to put this, as you can see, it's right next to, right next to this. There was a empty lot there and Mayor Taylor and his council members very graciously have offered to donate the entire lot to the parish for the animal shelter. And I cannot thank them enough because that means we don't have to spend time looking for property to buy and we don't have to spend the money to purchase that property. So we're already off to a good start there. Most of this has to do with dogs. And of course, we have a cat problem in Livingston Parish as well. It's just not as visible sometimes, but we do have that problem. But we have an immediate fix, our immediate way to get started on a fix for cat control. As we went to all these different shelters, we saw very few cats in their shelter because they're all using community cat program. And what that is, is just a TNR, trap, neuter and release. And it works very well and they all praise the idea of doing this and I like it very much also. So this will not require us to build a building. We won't have to wait on the building to get started on the cat. So we will do that as quickly as possible. And in the back of the room, I have a brochure that I hope all of you will pick up when you start to leave so that you can read through it and see exactly what community cat program is. And I think that you will agree that it's going to be a good thing. So thank you all again for coming and I hope that you will be supportive of this and I know it's going to be.
Thank you again, Maurice. I'm going to leave that over here tonight. Before you leave, if you want to come by and take a look at it, it'll be up here at the front. Our next report is going to come from the genius of the group, Mickey McMorris. He asked us to actually call him that. But this committee worked extremely hard. They were the first committee to meet officially and they have just put in tireless hours. So I want to thank them personally and I can't wait to hear what we have to hear from them today. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. When I started this endeavor with Mr. Randy, he said, Mickey, transparency, transparency, transparency. So he honestly means to be upfront with the folk and you know where your money's going. So nothing will be hidden from you and another thing I can't say enough about is the man hit the road running the next morning. He has been rocking and rolling every day, all night. If you don't know how hard he's been working, it's just unbelievable and he's not even on a payroll yet. So I look forward to a lot of good things happening. I said it from the first day I saw him, you know, his passion. He truly, truly believes that in the people of this parish and our parish, so I trust him wholeheartedly. I want to thank you for that and it was a pleasure serving on this team. Ms. Gail Howesley served, Mr. Jeremy Idell, Ms. Bridget Gilbert, Trey Caldwell. He couldn't make it here tonight. He's a pastor, so he's got to be at church tonight. Randy Smith with Smith Accounting in Dennis Springs. He had surgery. He couldn't be here. Mr. Tommy Lejeune from Falk Winkler CPA firm. Ms. Jamie Felder with the Sheriff's Office representative and Mr. Jim Ryan, who is a bond attorney in CPA. So I had a great team to help us out and I was a bit surprised that the budget is pretty complicated. So we took a lot of work and we jumped into that and of course, we haven't taken office yet. So you know, we can only gather information that was given to us. But one thing that struck me was, you know, we have a general fund and there's quite a few unfunded mandates that we have to, like the court. We have to fund the court. We had to fund the district attorney. We have to do subpoenas to the clerk of court, War II City Court. We fund some of theirs, not wholeheartedly, but we do provide funding. Justice other pieces throughout the parish. We fund those. Constables, we fund that. The registrar of voters, the coroner's office. Department of Motor Vehicles, we have to pay them, the utilities and things of that nature for the motor vehicles to be here. And Council on Aging gets some funding, the county agent. So you can see it's a whole host of things and we receive a millage and then the rest of the money comes from permits and other fees that's charged. So that's, that's our operations comes from that. Then we have some funding that are restricted funds and that's the health unit, which brings in about a 1.4, 1.5 million a year. Of course, that was voted down by the people and that's, I think this year for '23 and for '24, we get the funding and then the funding goes away in '25. But the health unit, I mean, I didn't realize that, you know, that's your sewer, your inspections of sewer. That, those things that come out of, that's funded from the health unit. So it's not just the health unit, like when we were, when most of us older folks, when we were kids, we went to the health unit and you got your shot, you know? And that's not the case anymore. We do have a health unit, but it's a minor part of the health unit funding. Then we have the jail and the roads. So the people of the parish was gracious enough to pass a one-cent sales tax. 25% of that goes to the jail. Now that produces about 7 million a year. In the past, the jail could not make it on 7 million a year until the debt was paid. So the jail has been paid off, so there's a little extra money there, not much, but extra money. And unfortunately, the jail isn't going away. I mean, this thing just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Seems like with the economy and the more people you get, it just, it's not going away. Every parish we met with, the jail is a problem. All 64 parishes in this state. It's just a huge issue. Fortunately, we look pretty good right now on that 25% of a penny. Then 75% of the penny goes to road. So that brings in about 23 million and then annually and then there's a millage that goes for roads as well. So that's about another $10 million in grants is what we've been receiving for roads. And of course, the hard work that Mr. Randy is going to take forth, meeting with these DOTD and other federal officials will bring in more money. And then we will have the match to spend more money on roads because, you know, that's what it, that's what it's all about is roads in this parish and infrastructure and building those things. So there are, there's money there. I want you to feel comfortable and you will know where, wherever penny go. And that's, that's this administration and that's our direction. And you know, from the beginning, he said, I want animal control, I want litter and I want drainage. So nothing else. That's it. And that's what we're going to try to do and we're accountable to the people and we're going to make sure that you know what's going on. And we're going to do what we can, be efficient as possible with your money and I hope you make, I hope we make you proud. So thank you very much. So thank you very much.
All right. Well, next, we're going to hear from our Drainage and Public Works Chairman, Gary O'Neil. One of the things, as he makes his way down, one of the first things we did was decide we were going to have a Drainage, Public Works, and Infrastructure Committee. And very quickly afterwards, we were like, no, we don't think we can cram all that into one thing. So I think one of the best decisions this team made was to split this up into a Drainage, Public Works, and Infrastructure. So we're going to have Gary come, and then immediately after him, we'll have Wade Holden from the Infrastructure Committee. And I think they worked well together, and I think you'll hear from these gentlemen that they got a lot done by cooperating together. So Gary, thank you for coming.
Usually, there's probably some people here in the audience, as well as some people in the transition, that know that eight to 10 minutes, which is what they told us we had, usually not good for me, and also neither are scripts. And like I said, there's probably some people in the crowd who are well aware of that. I do want to, before I get started, I want to thank Ms. Maurice for the space that we've used as a transition. Her office space has been where we've done all of our meetings, had a ton of our, not public meetings, but just our meetings as team leads and transition. And so thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. Doesn't have anything to do with drainage, but definitely wanted to let her know. My name is Gary O'Neil. As Scott said, I'm a citizen of Livingston Parish. I'm a lifelong resident of Livingston Parish. I'm a product of its public school system. I, let's see, I'm 45. I turned 45 on the 1st of January. I'm a Capricorn, like long walks on the beach. No, blue, blue, Steve. Thank you, Steve, with the chamber. I've had an opportunity to relocate multiple times in my life as a result of employment. I've chosen every time to stay here in Livingston Parish. Quite simply put, I love my, love where I grew up. I love my neighbors, whether my neighbors across the yard, across the neighborhood, across the city of Walker, across the parish. I love where I live. I love where I'm from. I think most folks who know me would know that. So Randy asked me to help out with the transition and help out with the drainage. I was humbled when he first asked me to do that. I've continued to be humble every time, humbled every time I've dealt with him. I'm also pretty damn excited, I'll be honest with you. I think his ideas about transparency and what he wants to do and the direction he wants to take this parish is something I think all of us are going to be excited about as well. And again, I just want to thank you, Randy, for giving me the opportunity to help you with this. It wasn't just a slogan when we said there's a new day in Livingston. It really is going to be, and I think everybody here is going to be proud of that direction and that new day. But real quick, I want to thank my drainage team members. Real quick, Melissa Jones is in the crowd. She came from a background in public health and emergency response. Ross Kenshin, who is not here, but he's an Albany resident, licensed surveyor, has fantastic insight into the way the parish operates now from a drainage perspective, as well as comparison and contrast to other parishes. Mr. Max Nasser, who's out in the audience tonight. Max has worked for engineering firms most of his career, also been a public servant, also currently serves in a planning and zoning role in the greater Baton Rouge area. He's been a mentor and a personal friend. Appreciate that, Max. Ms. Leanne Fitch, who is also not in the crowd tonight, she's a professional engineer. She runs a modeling group for DDG. She's also got her master's in numerical modeling, pursuing her doctorate. She's a very smart individual. Glad that she's participated in our process. Ms. Rachel Lambert, also not here tonight. She's the executive director of the Amit River Basin Commission. It's a huge piece for us to start to collaborate with these regional drainage entities more closely as a parish going forward. And Rachel's insight into that and her experience as an engineer and doing floodplain and watershed management, handling development for parishes in the past, was very important to us. Mr. Dugoss is up on the stage with us, who's got a background in inspection, has got a wealth of experience right here in our parish and in our municipalities from a drainage perspective. He was integral to our work, and his suggestions are all over my report and all over our team's report as well. Also wanted to mention, as we talked about, Wade Holden and Jim Gilbert. Thank y'all very much. The other side of the transition team, y'all were extremely helpful to us. Y'all's questions, and y'all's basically camped out at the place for the last months. Really appreciate that and appreciated our help, y'all's help with that. Bob Betlarki for making the trains run on time and making my train run on time half the time. Brandon Browning, I met you on social media, argued politics with you, but it was always respectful. And while we were both trying to change our minds about certain things, you encouraged me to meet with Randy and talk with Randy, the person who introduced me to him. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. And last but not least, DeeDee and Randy. Thanks. All right. So let's talk about our team's efforts. What we did was, we wanted to go out and meet with the parish, meet with what the folks said, not just a leadership perspective, but on a daily basis, the folks that were out there doing the work. We wanted to get a feel for what they do, for how they do it, what their input was, what their output was, how they went about doing their jobs on a daily basis with respect to drainage in our parish. Want to thank Mr. Ricks and the administration. Want to thank Sam DeGeralamo and the leadership of Public Works here at the parish for allowing us to, you know, have interviews with them, to have meetings with them and their boots on the ground folks, to do ride-alongs with them, to find out what their days look like. We collected a lot of data, and we had a lot of interviews. Want to touch on the basics of our report, and I don't want to overpromise Randy to all of these. I want to remind you all, these are suggestions that our team made. They're not hard and fast. These are, these are potential improvements that we see that could potentially be made. There's just one of these that I think I'm very willing to say that Randy is absolutely going to take, take part in, and that's the first one, which is urgent need for the development of a drainage master plan. I think everybody here does not have, there's nobody here that doesn't have to be told that drainage is an issue for this parish, and it needs to be improved. And so that's one of the first things we have to realize is, is without a plan, you can't really, you don't know which way you're going. And without a plan, as Randy said earlier, you're not going to get off of first base with what we want to do and how we want to go about doing it. So a drainage master plan is going to give us details and strategies for managing stormwater, runoff, surface water runoff. It's going to help us map and identify critical infrastructure, critical drainage infrastructure, areas that are having problems. It's going to allow us to assess that infrastructure, pinpoint vulnerable areas, developing strategies for mitigating these types of things, right? How can we go about making this better? We're also going to look at policy process procedure. That's not the fun part. It's not turning dirt. It's not doing some big, huge project, but it's actually changing ordinances for the better, or improving ordinances, or trying to promote higher standards that might help us, not just our existing homeowners, but our future potential homeowners for development. We're not going to stop development. We're just going to do a better job at it, right? A master plan helps us with all of this, and I think that's something that Randy has committed to, and I think the results of that plan are going to be something that we can point towards as a guide for how we move forward in the parish from a drainage perspective. A few of the other suggestions that we had come up with, that we've provided to the transition are diversified funding sources. Just heard Mr. Mickey talk about capital constraints. Every parish, every municipality in this state has a restraint, and it's, excuse me, a constraint, and that's capital, right? And so one of the ways, from a drainage perspective, we can address that is going after every single dollar available to us. We've had a lot of spending bills passed in Congress. There's a lot of funding available at the state level. There's funding available every year from entities like CPRA, NOAA, FEMA, the Corps of Engineers. We need to do our best, our dead-level best, to try to go after every single dollar that's not already promised somewhere else, to be able to address drainage wherever we need it here in the parish. So once we have our plan, or actually, we could do this starting tomorrow, we can start going after more grant dollars for drainage improvement. But once we have our plan, we can couple that plan with our pursuit of grant funding to get more done for you for less tax money, and get you the relief and the improvement of drainage that we all need. Simple things, just like enhancing, excuse me, complying with the ordinances we already have on the books. Let's just make sure we're doing everything we need to do that's out there already. Before we go reinvent the wheel, let's make sure we review the wheel we got, see what kind of shape it's in, and let's start enforcing the ordinances on the books if we're not, or making sure we do that on a daily basis. Inter-agency collaboration. What do I mean by collaboration? I mean transparency, that Randy talks about all the time. I mean communication. There are multiple funded gravity drainage districts in this parish. There is a parish with a public works department. There is an entity known as the Amit River Basin Commission that just recently got awarded $142 million worth of funding, 100% money, no local match required, for flood risk reduction projects in this basin, of which Livingston is the recipient of a large amount of that funding. If we're not communicating, we're not collaborating, if we're not talking back and forth, what's Gravity 1 doing, what's Gravity 2 doing, what's Parish Public Works doing? If we don't have that level of communication, then quite simply put, we're going to duplicate efforts, or we're going to miss some. And so we want to make sure that, as a parish government, that there's collaboration that goes on, and there's communication that occurs on a consistent basis. And so that's going to be one of our suggestions to the administration as well. We have talked and suggested establishment of specialized maintenance crews, specialized teams dedicated to upkeep of ditches and culverts, especially in areas where there is no funded gravity drainage district. Where those places are that aren't collecting a current millage, we've got to try to do something with them. And so we are going to suggest to the administration that we dedicate crews to those areas to help improve drainage in those areas. There's some other stuff here that's going to get down in the weeds. I hate to say it, pardon the pun, but standardization of drainage servitude is something we looked at. To be able to maintain laterals, to be able to maintain ditches, to be able to improve drainage, you've got to be able to get crews and equipment in and out of it. And so in order to do that, the parish has to have access via servitude. And so we want to take a look at what we have, what other parishes may have that are doing a good job of it, and see if there's improvements that we can make, or there's standardizations that we can make. Technology. And when I say technology, what I mean by that is GIS. Okay, we want to try to provide a state-of-the-art GIS system for this parish. That is public-facing, that is something that our development professionals, our planners, our engineering firms can access and get better data from, to have a better understanding of flood risk and drainage issues in this parish. Getting a really robust, really state-of-the-art, cutting-edge GIS system is going to be a priority for this parish to be able to do drainage the way that it needs to, and to be able to handle development the way that we all want it to be handled going forward in the I guess I just want to close by saying, this is a, it sounds like an elephant, and it is. Elephants aren't eaten all at once, they're eaten one bite at a time. So a lot of these suggestions aren't necessarily something that Randy's going to be able to take office and do on day one, but they are suggestions that over time can be implemented and can be done to improve things. And I would just say, hold us accountable, hold that administration, hold this administration accountable. They're handling your tax dollars, but they're going to do it in a transparent way that I think we're all going to be proud of, especially when it comes to drainage, but across the board, you're going to hear more tonight. But again, I just want to thank Randy for allowing us to be able to help. Anyway, that's it. Sorry.
All right. Next is Wade Holden with the Infrastructure Committee, and this was another one that was one of the first committees to meet. And every time I went in the headquarters, it seemed like they were doing something. So thank you. Come tell us what you have.
I want to start off tonight by introducing my team. Head Mr. Gerald Burns, he's got extensive economic master plan development for Livingston Parish, last 12 years, I believe. Brian Clemmons, Drainage Board, extensive on the drainage systems. Mr. Jim Gilbert, extensive background in government grants, personnel, and organization. Mr. Randy Russian, extensive background in parish government and utility infrastructure. These are my people that was on my team. I had to reach out a little bit further because I needed some extra help. Want to say a special thanks to Melissa Jones and Gus Holden for helping me interview. Also, Mr. Steve Larky, did not realize that he was helping me by going to look at limestone roads during the bad rain on a Saturday. On the interviews, we come to realize real quick that nobody knew what their job title was, or who they answered to, or what they were supposed to do. The people were all asking, rumors going around, what would I do? After we interviewed and got to know a lot of the people that worked out here, there are a lot of good ones left. If the people decided all to quit at one time, the infrastructure team, their job was to come in here with volunteers and could get Randy back up and going without missing a beat. That was the whole idea of the entire thing. Recommendations: Identify all new developments that are still under construction. Perform a third-party inspection of the roads, drainage, and any deficiencies were found, notify the developers, contractors to address the required correction. We did, we were not able to get a list of every subdivision that was in the works, what the warranties were, how much warranty was left. There are a lot of problems with bridges in the new subdivisions, the streets, and the drainage. Identify all existing developments that are still under warranty, and perform a third-party inspection of the roads and drainage. If any deficiencies were found, we need to call the warrant. That way, the parish does not wind up coming out of pocket, taking the taxpayers' money to pay for the repairs. Recognize the Public Works Department to have a crew that continuously cleans ditches and culverts to help with drainage issues. What we had found on the work orders, they were only allowed to do the address that was on the work order. If a neighbor next door had a basketball stuck in a culvert, they would not go remove the basketball. When the ditches, they need to visualize what the problem is holding up the drainage and clean out the entire street. Have a lateral ditch crew for the areas that are not have drainage bored. Everybody talks about rideaways and trying to get through it. They do make equipment that can crawl down the middle of a ditch and clean it out. Enforce all ordinances of infrastructure of roads and drainage and bridges. This goes back to the planning and zoning in the subdivisions. We have the large lot subdivisions with limestone roads, supposed to be eight inches thick, ordinance of there, but they're only three inches thick. The roads were the sole cement, the asphalt, the asphalt's supposed to be three inches. A lot of places, it's only two inches. But the, we have the ordinances to enforce, but we have no enforcement. Create a team between Livingston Parish Government and the LEDOTD, Capital Region Planning Commission, state legislators, federal legislators, and mayors of Livingston Parish on the highway infrastructure and all other infrastructure projects. Identify all developments that have been submitted for preliminary plat approval through the planning and zoning and review, and submitted plans of compliance with the current infrastructure ordinance. That is what's not being done today. When you get a set of plans in for a new development, they need to go through, check sewer, the drainage, the water, fire department, and so on and so forth. Create a technical team to review and evaluate current developments and infrastructure ordinance, and suggest improvements that will better protect the parish for the future maintenance liability. Create a liaison team between Livingston Parish and the LEDOTD on the infrastructure projects that's going on. Me and Mr. Burns had several conversations about roundabout. We need one at 4H Club Road and 190, but the state government went and did one at Eden Church Road instead. Create a roadway improvement master plan by identifying all required road improvements and evaluating which of the improvements are already ongoing and what stage of any project that is needed to get started. Normally, you have all your councilmen fighting over which road needs to be done first, or they want their roads done, but the parish really needs to go to a grading system and grade all the roads and do the ones that are in the worst shape, and then move on to the ones that are less need of repair when the funding are available. Create a technical team that works with the Amit River Basin, Livingston Parish Drainage Boards, Public Works, and the administration. Create a master plan by identifying all required drainage improvements and evaluating which of the improvements are already ongoing and what stage, and any projects that are needed to get started. Create a technical team that works to supply safe, clean, potable water for all of Livingston Parish. A lot of folks north of I-12 are in good shape, a lot in districts six, seven, eight are in terrible shape on the water supply that they have. Identify state and federal grants, opportunities for infrastructure and improvement. These are our recommendations for Mr. Delat. We wish Mr. Delat and Ms. DeeDee all the best. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much, Wade. We're going to transition a little bit to our committee that handled public relations and economic development. So I'm going to call up Chris Como. Chris worked on the campaign with us. If you liked the commercials for Randy Delat, Chris was the producer of those. So he's very creative, and he did a great job with this committee. So I want to thank him for his hard work, and let's hear what he has.
So first of all, I want to name the people that was on my committee. Kelly Dickerson, who's our new state rep in Watson. Tracy Gerlinghaus, the councilman. Community leaders, Daniel Christian and Jennifer Rao, Sybil Cotton of Our Lake, Tim Young of Open Health, Sybil and some are here. And John Ware, who's the former Economic Development Director. Our committee Our committee was focused on looking at ways to improve transparency and communication for the administration, and also to look how we can improve economic development in Livingston Parish. Randy had promised to be the most transparent administration in Livingston history, so to do that, he should create a freestanding communications department, and also an active social media presence. Making regular videos, not only fireside chat sort of videos, but also footage of projects as they're being done, like roads projects, or drainage projects as they're being created. That would be good to inform the citizens. Randy had also talked about improving the website a lot on the campaign, and so we think that the website could do more for the citizens. So you know, you don't have to get in your car and go all the way to Livingston to do certain things like permits and stuff, there's a, you know, a good way that you could do that maybe online, and so we're looking at some of that. And also, we looked at East Baton Rouge Parish, they have an app called 311 where citizens can make complaints and suggestions, and so we're going to look at Randy doing that for Livingston Parish, so people can actively communicate to the parish government. And also putting financial statements on the website, so you guys can see transparently, you know, how your money's being spent. Also, our logos and different things, we looked at, you know, they just seem very 1980-ish, and so I think a rebrand of those things for the parish would be in order. And then, you know, just picking a theme and having uniformity throughout all the departments, I think that would make us have a much more professional look to outside communities. And also, just more TV coverage in general. Randy spoke earlier about moving the planning commission meetings into here and then broadcasting those on TV the first Thursday of every month. As we all know, a lot of stuff goes on in the planning commission these days, that's important, and those meetings happening almost in secret in the basement of the parish building just isn't, you know, in the best interest of the parish, so I think that will happen immediately. And also, a popular idea that we've had is we've engaged with French Settlement High School and Walker High School about getting some of those young people in their TV production department to come out and film maybe some of the drainage board and fire board meetings, and then getting those put up online for everyone to see. That's an idea that's been very popular, as we've told citizens about that, and we've engaged with French Settlement High School and Walker High School, we're about to talk to Live Oak and Denon Springs High School, but they're very excited about it, and those kids, it's great for the kids too, give them real work experience, we could give them a small stipend for coming to do it, and so. As far as economic development goes, we want to enhance positive perceptions about Livingston Parish. You know, right now, we have low crime, and we're a great place for retail shoppers to visit from surrounding parishes, you know, so we already have a lot going for us. We're suggesting that we restart Livingston Day at the Capitol in 2025 to raise awareness with state legislators about, you know, what's happening here as far as economic development. And also, as early as this year, hosting a luncheon and inviting economic development leaders from around the United States, around the state, to come here and find out how we're improving with economic development, trying to make steps forward with that. We already have some great companies here, and so one idea that we've had is creating some video content of the different successful companies that are here and getting that broadcast out around the country. You know, that's one thing we learned from economic development experts is that when outside leaders can see that something's already happening there, and that gives them ideas or makes them feel more comfortable. But the main thing about attracting new industry is infrastructure. The master plan outlines an economic corridor which essentially runs alongside I-12 and Florida Boulevard, that's where industry is designed to grow. I know there's going to be a lot of talk about zoning this year, so we want to just make sure that that economic corridor is preserved for industry to grow there, so there's a place for it to go. And as far as infrastructure goes, we need to be more forward-thinking about infrastructure in the economic corridor. We learned that in times past, the administration would almost wait for an industry to want to come before they would put the infrastructure in for them, but a lot of times, these industries, when they're looking around the whole country, you know, they want something that's reddier. And so that's what we would suggest is getting forward-thinking on some infrastructure in the corridor, you know, trying to get before the industries come, so when they see it growing up, they can get excited about it. And something that was interesting to me is that sewage treatment is one of the main thing that industries are looking for, and everyone in this room knows that, you know, we need more sewage capacity, so as we go to create that sewage capacity, if we could put maybe a sewage treatment plant in the economic corridor, that would kind of kill two birds for incoming industry. And also, traffic is a big problem, as everyone in this room knows, so, you know, if we're going to create new roads, maybe there would be a chance to put a new road through the economic corridor with the idea that maybe some job sites are formed on either side of that road. You can see that with Cook Road now, a road that runs from Pete Highway to Juban, you know, if we do that in the future to alleviate traffic, we could also create potential job sites. You could see that if you put a sewage treatment center plant and a new road, you know, alongside I-12, and then economic development brings people in to look at it, and that's the kind of, you know, forward progress that they would look to excite them to open industry here. And then finally, we should work with the new DOTD Secretary that Governor Landry names as soon as we can get ahold of that person. And also, we learned that in times past, there hasn't necessarily been alignment between our priorities here in the parish and what the state's going to do and all the chapters in between, so we encourage the administration to just make sure that the goals and priorities of the state DOTD all the way down to local is just aligned.
All right, thank you. Has it been good so far? Getting some information? All right, well, we got a couple more reports. I'm going to call up Bobette, if she'll come and give the report on the permitting and zoning committee, it was kind of two things we kind of forced together, but I think they did a great job, so come talk to us, Bobette.
Join me, please, he was my co-chair, and I couldn't have done a lot of this without him. Yes, he even wore a suit and tie today. Yeah. I want to introduce our team. We had Sarah Ferris, Devon Gregoire, Nancy Kimball, Holly Valentine, Wayne Mack, Seth Mosby, Brandon Browning, and Ms. Erin Sandifer. These team members were invaluable. We had so much to do with the planning and permitting, and I guess me being a teacher for 27 years, and I am very proud to say that I have been a teacher in Livingston Parish for 27 years. I am currently retired. We do have one of the greatest parishes as far as education goes, and I hope that we can maintain that. I do see with growth, it is starting to decline, but I think that we have a handle on it, and that you'll hear in my report that we're going to suggest a lot more collaboration with the school board, and I think that's going to help a lot. And I do, I'm going to say something off the bat because I don't know, I hope at the end of this, you're going to give the audience a chance, so you will get to ask questions at the end of this. We put forth a lot of work, and I guess this comes again from my teaching background, I didn't feel like I could do everything, Brandon couldn't do everything, so we divided everything into, I want to call them projects, and each person on our committee had a little task to perform and to go out and do some research. They came back with some very invaluable information, and I just, I could not have done this without my team members. I just, I thank y'all so, so much. And most of them are here, and I will say this, as I look out into this audience, is I hate to say this, there are students that I taught sitting here, that tells my age, and even one of the people on my transition team with Sarah Ferris, she was one of my students in the past. But we went and visited with Ascension Parish and Tanspahoe Parish, they were very gracious to host us, gave us a lot of valuable information. We also went and visited with the Southeast Planning and Development Commission, we wanted to learn more about the MyGovernment Online, which is sometimes referred to as MGO, and they gave us a lot of input on that. We went out and interviewed all the current employees, well, not all of them, but the ones in planning, permitting, and utilities, which includes the janitors and maintenance, and we learned a lot of valuable information from this. Based on our research, we've come up with some recommendations for Mr. Delat, and no, as someone already said, these are only recommendations, so what you're hearing tonight is not necessarily things he's going to definitely do, they're just suggestions that we have of things that we think might be a helpful thing for the parish. How many of you in here currently know that we have online permitting? You don't have to come up here and go to Ms. Didi's permitting office, you can go online and do permitting. Raise your hand if you know we have that. And see, I know that, I didn't know it. When I started interviewing people and started with this transition team, I was surprised to learn that we had online permitting. And it's very valuable. If you want a culvert or something, you don't have to come up here and get it, you can just go online in the MGO system and you can get your permit. So something we're proposing is that the public needs to be educated on the availability and the convenience of this online permitting program, because they're not aware of it. Well, you say, well, how can that be done? Well, we think this can be done through online videos. Also, when we have town hall meetings that Mr. Delat is planning to do, we think that we should be able to have some type of tutorial or some type of, like, teaching lesson on how to use the online permitting at these town hall meetings, and do a lot of more advertisement on our website, that this online permitting exists, because if people don't know it exists, they can't use it. And currently, they are trying to get the planning department online also, so that would be a great thing, and I think it's supposed to come online maybe February, March, possibly, so we'll have, the planning department will also be online. Something that I learned when we were doing our interviews, and some of my interview of the transition team, they came back and they heard this also, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking citizens who come into the permitting office and we can't communicate with them. They try to bring a translator with them, but it's very, very difficult, and they deserve just as much respect as anyone else does. And the MGO, the MyGovernment Online system, it provides a translator. So when we get this all online, you can just hand them a tablet, and they will be able to type in, and it'll translate what they're saying and translate what the permitting office is trying to tell them, and I think this is absolutely a wonderful item, you know, to put in place. We're also going to recommend that Mr. Delat, I know nobody who works wants to hear this, but that he go to a four-and-a-half-day work week. We have heard complaints after complaints from the citizens that they are off on Fridays and they come up here to do permitting, or whatever they need to attend to, and the offices are closed. And I know my mother doesn't drive, so on my days off, if it's Friday, I have to bring her, and that's the only day I would have to drive her up here, so it would be very helpful, you know, if we at least went to a four-and-a-half-day work week, so our citizens could be served easier, more easily. Mr. Delat's campaign slogan was on the bottom, I don't know if any of you saw this on his billboards, "A Voice For The People." And that's all I've heard, I've worked extensively with this campaign. He is all about transparency and listening to the people of this parish. And I have been on the Planning and Zoning Committee for, Commission for four years, and as I went into the, I was Mr. Delat's appointee, and as our district ate, people would come up to me and say, well, why aren't the planning and zoning or the planning commission meetings broadcast? Why are they held in a special room, and at 5:30? We don't get off work and we can't get there. Mr. Delat promised that he would move the planning commission meeting into this room, that they would be live broadcast, and they will be recorded so that you can go back and look at them later, so they will no longer be, you know, kept where the people cannot have access to it, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And also, we're going to suggest that he move the meetings to 6 o'clock instead of 5:30, just to give more people an opportunity to be able to attend and be more transparent. We're also suggesting that he expedite and simplify the planning and permitting processes by trying to merge the planning department, the permitting department, and the environmental offices. We know this is going to require cross-training of employees and a change in the flow of operations, and it may even possibly require reconfiguring the office itself, but we think that this would be a great thing for the people of this parish. We also suggest implementing a standalone addressing system, so that when you come to get your address, you don't have to go to three or four different spots to do it, you go one place, it's all taken care of, and it's also put into the 911 system. We found that some addresses are inadvertently being left out and not being put into the 911 system. Mr. Jeff Taylor has bought into the GIS system, which is the geographic information system, they use this to do the addressing, and he is going to let us use it or have it. And the Southeast Planning assured us that it would work with MGO and they're compatible, so we're suggesting that we do this. We're also suggesting that he be a little more aggressive in dealing with blighted and abandoned homes. We know that there are ordinances and things in place for this, but it just seems like enforcement is lacking, and we've had a lot of complaints from citizens about blighted and abandoned homes and that they're not being taken care of. We spoke with our contractors and our engineers, I had Ms. Holly Valentine and Mr. Seth Mosby speak with them, and one of the reoccurring things is that things just change too often. Yes, ordinances do change. They probably are not aware of the changes, and I think that's their biggest complaint, is that they're not aware when they, you know, changes take place. So we're recommending that we add a contractor update page to the website, so that when ordinances are changed, it's immediately put on the contractor website, on that website, and they can go to there and they can see all the ordinance changes immediately, so that they're aware of this and they can, you know, put it in their preliminary plats, We found that there is a communication gap within the parish with the school board, also with other government entities like our mayors, our fire departments, etc. One thing that we're suggesting to kind of bridge this gap is Mr. Delat have open meetings with the mayors, with the fire boards, etc., like maybe once a quarter or something, so that they can all stay on the same page and know what's going on. And the school board, the school board members have expressed to me personally that they're never aware when there's a development coming into their district, so how can they prepare the schools? So I am suggesting that an email be sent to each Livingston Parish School Board member, as well as the central office, anytime a stage-one preliminary plat is required, and that they will be invited to the stage-one preliminary plat meeting, so that they have access to know what's going on in their district, to know if they need to start building new schools, etc., they'll know what's going on. We also, as you heard, we didn't just interview the planning and zoning commission, the planning and permitting departments, we went into the maintenance, they call it utilities, it's the maintenance and janitors. Some of the things we found there that the employees were not aware of the MSDS sheets, standard operating procedures, our personal protective equipment that was required for each job, so we suggest that perhaps our safety officer come up with a safety report, and it would include how he's going to ensure that all employees have access to written MSDS sheets, standard operating procedures, and personal protective equipment. Also, we found inventory was very lacking and very slack, so we're going to suggest that some strict inventory controls, procedures be put into place, such as possibly locking up light bulbs, batteries, and have some type of checkout procedure so that we know where the equipment is and the inventory is. We also suggest that some things that we found, maybe Mr. Delat could contract out some work bar instead of the employees that we have hired. As Mr. Holden said, we also found that most employees were unaware of their job descriptions, if they even had any, so we're going to suggest that human resources ensure that each employee is aware of his or her job description, that they have a signed copy in their personnel folder, and also that they're each given a hard copy, so that they can no longer say that they are not aware of their job description. One of the most- One of the most biggest complaints that we had was that the computer system is very, very slow. And I know the budget is very tight. But we suggest to Mr. Delat that he implement some type of computer purchasing program. We know he cannot purchase new computers all at once, but perhaps he can purchase a few at a time so that our computer system can get up to date and be quicker. We also going to suggest that we work harder to attract industry into our parish. Because right now, we are a bedroom parish. We don't have a lot of industry. We've been focusing mainly on housing. And I think we need to put more focus on industry and attracting industry into our parish. Brandon, do you have anything to add?
Well, since you surprised me, you know, I have no idea if she's going to call me up here, but...
That's what happens when you don't answer my emails.
You got me, you got me. You know, Bob Ed did an awesome job here communicating these recommendations that we have. But, so I won't go over that again. But I will say that Randy Delat is perhaps, just in my short time of getting to know him, he reminds me a lot of my dad in the context of his work ethic. I don't know if he sleeps much, but he operates like he sleeps a lot, but I know he doesn't. But I can tell you, just being in rooms with him behind a closed door, we always wonder what those conversations are like, you know, with government behind closed door. And from what he's telling you, when you hear the words or you hear the statement, "A Voice For The People," right? You want to categorize that as cliche. But I can tell you, just from being behind closed doors with him, that is an essential priority with... Heard it over and over and over. I've heard transparency over and over and over. And he's beat on a table, said, "We're going to do it. Animal control, we're going to do it. We're going to do all these things that I'm telling you." The man means what he says. He means what he says. And if he cannot do it, I promise you, he will have a good reason why he cannot do it. So, Randy, I'm looking forward to working with you, sir. I'm excited for this parish. I'm excited for Randy. I'm excited for this entire team. And I'm telling you, he's what we need in this position. He has phenomenal work ethic, his integrity's high. And I'm going to tell you what, he has very high expectations of himself and his team. If his team doesn't perform, have a reason that they're going to be out the door or have a good hint, or a good idea, they're going to be out the door. Very high expectations. So I'm excited and I hope y'all are too. Thank y'all.
I want to take this time to thank Ms. Maurice also for letting us use her building and to apologize also for the parking incidences that we've had and apologize to her other leasing attendant people because many times we parked in their spots unknowingly. So I just want to apologize to them and to her for that. And thank y'all for your attention tonight.
All right. Well, last report is going to be from Bruiser Bryson, that he is going to handle the Homeland Security Committee. This was James Wascom's committee. And I know they worked hard. This was another one that we didn't initially have stacked as a committee. But Randy called me one night and said, "We've got to have Homeland Security. We've got to have this." And it came together and I think they did a phenomenal job. So let's hear from them. Thank you.
Good evening. We got the smallest, out of the whole thing, we actually got blessed. We have the smallest department. I had to deal with three guys. We met a little bit of, let's say, adversity at the very beginning. But luckily, we were able to come it because the guys would get out and come talk to us, give us a lot of good information. The purpose of our committee, the Homeland Security Office of Emergency Prepartness Committee, was to provide an assessment of the current employees. We were to provide a current inventory and we were going to make representation of Mr. Randy Delat. After our assessment of the people, we have a lot of knowledge in that department. We, knowledge through training, training is offered everywhere. The list of assets and inventory, yeah, we, just like everybody else. We've got to come up with a way of tracking the things that belong to OEP and the parish. Tags, scanners, whatever it takes. But we got to figure out what we have because right now, we really don't know. It's transparent. We can tell you where some of it is. We were taken to two places, I believe. And there's got to be more places around here because we don't have a real good list. We were provided a list from the guys that work. And I'm going to tell y'all, Mr. Chad Anderson, Chris Berry, and Shannon Dwyer cooperated, helped us at every stop they could. Now, our committee was made up of a couple of people that you've heard tonight because Ms. Melissa Jones is on our committee too. As you can tell, she was on just about everybody's. Our chairman was James Wascom, District Four Fire Chief out of Walker. Very knowledgeable on disasters. We had Mr. Juana Christian, Mr. Kerry Mosby, Mr. Eric Harrell, Melvin Weet, Ms. Cindy O'Neil, and myself. We didn't have a lot to do other than inventory and evaluate people. So we did that to the best of our abilities, but we came up with our recommendation. And they're really not hard to accomplish. Number one, we've got to establish an emergency operations. We have one. We need to dig into it and make sure it's current and up to date. Number two, we got to have a standard operating guidance so everybody knows what's expected and where it's at. And I believe that that is something that's really important. We're going to reach out to both GOSEP and FEMA and find out where there's monies available, where there's training. GOSEP, we went and met with them. They have training available just about anytime we want it. One of the biggest things we have is relationship. We have to cultivate the relationships back to Livingston Parish. We have to get all the fire chiefs in on, the police chief, the mayor. Because a disaster doesn't get ran 100% out of this building. It starts in this building and is transmitted out. So if everybody's not on the same page, we're going to run into problems. We're going to try to, we made a suggestion that we create a team. Employing people through the parish to work in that office ties the budget up. But at the same time, we have employees that are already on the payroll. So instead of just, "Hey, there's a hurricane coming, go home." How about we pull some of those people back into the mix, put them upstairs in the operations center, and use the available resources that we have so we don't put a constraint on the budget? Makes a little sense to us. Right? Our next thing that we talked about was a steering committee. In the purpose of being transparent, we make a committee. A committee tells us what's going right, what's going wrong. At first, it might meet every quarter. As the process gets going and everything gets fundamentally right, we can back that off. But they're still there to give us public input on what it is. It could be made up of two fire chiefs, one from, let's say, the east side of the parish, one from the west, a representative from the sheriff's department. You know, we need him in there, Public Works. And then take the other two positions or other three, one of them be a representative straight to Mr. Delat that can transcribe the minutes and bring it to him and say, "This is what we're doing." And then the other two be interviewed and put on this committee from normal citizens. That way, we know partially what the citizens of this parish are looking for and what they think we need to be doing. The last recommendation we made was that we give access to the system that's known as Web EOC to all 10 fire districts in this parish, with their permission level only going as high as the parish EOC. They can input what they need in the Web EOC or where they're going to clear roads or rescue people into that system. It can be tracked upstairs on our system. Makes sense to give it to them. The cost is there. We looked into that. But other than that, I give the guys, Chad and Chris and Shannon, give them a big shout out because y'all were instrumental in helping us get the information we did. And I just hope that in the future, it will be a new day for Livingston Parish. We can get it all running right and be ready for the next storm, flood, ice storm, whatever it is. Thank y'all for your time.
All right. Well, you have heard the reports. And we do want to have a time for questions. I know Brandon has offered to answer every question himself. I will just say, just kind of to wrap up, you know, the transition team was kind of a natural outgrowth of the campaign message, which if you remember, the four issues for the campaign were development, infrastructure, drainage, and animal control. When we looked at that, you know, with a background of empowering the people and protecting and promoting their voice, it was kind of a natural step to set up these committees the way we did them. And then all their work, which is, you know, I really want to thank them because it was their input and everything that led to what you're going to see here in a bit, which Randy will unveil, which is the 100-Day Plan. And it's titled, "The 100-Day Plan To Protect And Empower The People." So I think what you saw tonight is the culmination of that work that started, you know, October 15th. I think our first meeting was October 16th. Randy, we met in Denham Springs for lunch. And so this is, I'm amazed at the work that's been done in this amount of time. I mean, really, two and a half months has come together. And then it's, you know, it's going to be, I think we've given Randy the best opportunity for success, starting on January 8th. And, you know, you being here tonight and giving up your Wednesday night is a testament to how bought in you are as citizens. So I want to thank y'all. So we do, I do want to open it up for questions. Obviously, I'm not going to answer them, but if it's directed towards one of the committee heads, we'll call them up. And does anybody have anything specific they want to ask or... Yeah. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Who's committee was that?
Guys, we've been here an hour and a half and you sacrifice a lot of time. I want to just make a couple of points clear. We're going to receive help on animal patrol from a lot of people, okay? The sheriff's department is going to help us in this endeavor. They currently providing a little bit of animal patrol we have. And they'd much rather be fighting crime than doing that. So we're going to get some financial support and some equipment from them. Wanted to make that clear. Mickey spoke about financial. I made a note, a couple of notes. Jim Ron's not here today, but he's made some suggestions in the past where he called it free money, where it's going to be feasible to bond money. And that may happen as soon as August of this year, as much as $100 million we may receive. So just things I want to give you information. Drainage, river basin money, all those things, LWI. We got a superstar hanging over here with Gary O'Neil is sitting on that board. He's already got some money for our parish, y'all. And we know we can't make that announcement. We can't make that announcement now because it's not official, but we know it's coming, okay? We already been told. In addition to that, there's a little bit of nepotism. Gary doesn't work for me, but his mom will. And she will be on that board. So we're going to have two votes on that board. Let's see what I got. I made an album. We didn't speak much on IT or technology, but things are going to change, guys. That's where it's at. We got Devin Gregoire here. He's set on that committee also. There's going to be a lot of things coming down the pipe. The current administration has started this process. They have bought about 50% of the stuff from Southeast Planning. We're going to be able to afford the other 50%. We're going to be wholly integrated with it. We're going to have apps, everything where people can work with tutorials from their home, if they so choose to. Infrastructure, we talked about it a while ago. That involves utilities too. Eric Schametta with help from Chris Como has got a meeting scheduled with us. They get, the Public Service Commission gets a lot of calls on water. So he wants to fix this problem in Livingston Parish, and we want him to fix it. So we think we're going to get some money for water and sewer. Let's see what I left. Planning and permitting will be combined along with the environmental. They say it's going to be tough, but like Brandon says, when I give you my word and I bang on the table, it's going to happen. So that's going to happen. In addition to that, to the chagrin of some of the employers, we are going to have a four-and-a-half-day work week. So that has to, we are serving the public. We work for the people. That has to happen. Let's see what I got. Abandoned homes. Abandoned homes, we are hiring three more employees for that division so we should be able to double what we're already doing. May not be enough, but you got to walk before you can run. And I suppose, let's see. OEP, we'll work for the parish and not for individuals. That means we're going to close that disconnect between the sheriff's office, the fire departments, the mayors, and parish government. That's going to close. And we, I think I can take this liberty of say that the new GOSEP Director for the state of Louisiana is a friend of Livingston Parish and a direct buddy of Bruiser here. So Bruiser's got me over a barrel. Y'all don't know what he's going to ask for. But we do have, we do have a lot of things that we're going to implement that hasn't been implemented. This committee has done everything we have asked them to do. And I'm telling you, that's why Livingston Parish is going to move forward. We're going to move forward because of you, you, the people. I believe this wholeheartedly. I get contacted by everyone, Congressman Graves yesterday. Everyone wants to know what they can do now. Everyone is on board now, and it's only for one reason. They see you. They see you, the people, engage. They want to, and I'll tell you, that's the asset of our parish, is you. I'm going to fight alongside you. You give me the direction you need me to go, and that's what we're going to do. And our staff is going to work to please you. I got to know if you are disappointed in us in any kind of way because I can't fix it if I don't know you're disappointed. Guys, I speak from the heart and I'm a plain-speaking person, but I'm going to work hard for you and your tax dollars. And thank y'all for coming here tonight. One more thing, if you can encourage anybody that couldn't be here tonight, and even if you want to join us, at 2 o'clock Sunday, we had the inauguration. And we're expecting some heavyweights to be here just because they see the excitement of these people. We've been a lot of congressmen to be here. So thank y'all so much, guys, again.
All right. Well, there's really not much more to say. We do have here the New Day Livingston 100-Day Plan. This is President Delat's 100-Day Plan To Protect And Empower The People. So you guys are the first ones to get a copy. And we'll have them up here tonight. If you have any other questions, please feel free to stick around. And we just want to thank you for giving us your evening to come and be a part of the growth of this parish. Good night.